March twelfth, twenty twenty-five, planning commission meeting. Order at seven oh nine. And we'll do the roll call.
Dennis Ferraro, Eagles Nest Road.
Bethany Cody, Lake and Chapman.
Johnson, White Oak Drive.
Eric Powers, Staff Player.
Move through the agenda.
Moved through the agenda.
On paper.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Minutes from the previous meeting of February twenty-sixth, twenty-five.
Do we approve it?
On paper.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. No comment. Everybody's clearing out. We only have a couple of public left. Nope. Okay. No public comment? New business, six A draft charter township of Marquette, blight and property maintenance ordinance discussion. Eric.
So this is back before you tonight, this draft ordinance. It was update, I haven't been at the last few meetings, but it has been updated based on the comments from those last few meetings. Specifically, the term tires was added to the list of items in section three definitions under junk noted in red text. And then after talking with Attorney Zappa regarding long grass or no grass properties, we have not included any of those provisions. Speaking with him before the meeting here, he said, if you have any questions or concerns about that, feel free to call him. But he stated that with kind of the rise in people, non-traditional cultivation of yards, not just grass, the traditional grass lawn that everybody thinks of. That's potential sticky situations that might be tough to enforce. So he advised that it would be best to leave it out. Other than that, again, there for your review, really the only thing changed or added was that red text word, literally just the word tires. And other than that, it is largely the same. So before you tonight for your consideration, and as a reminder, it would go if approved, or if suggested for approval tonight, it would go next to the board for their consideration.
So Eric, I have questions, as far as you're concerned, this is ready to go if we have a vote to approve it and send it out?
Talking with Jason today, him and I both, both feel that way.
Okay.
And it's, we've done our due diligence on it. Not to say it's been kicked around for too long. It's gotten its, I think, best consideration at this level. I think we both think it's appropriate to send it along to the board.
Any of all the changes in here you had talked about, are you satisfied with everything?
Yes, I, I, my comment, I missed the last meeting, but the comment from the prior meeting was that the, the reference to the Michigan Motor Vehicle Code was all encompassing of anything that was self-propelled. So that took care of all of people's concerns about boats and this and that. But I see that there was some of that language was actually put back in, you know, specifically, so everything's fine with me. I think the enforceability provisions of this, you know, ordinance are really good, the way that Roger, Jason and Eric have worked on it, so.
Yeah, I think so too. Well, if you want to make a motion, whenever, we can get it going.
I make a motion to approve.
I support.
The ordinance stated in six eight and send it out to the township for their approval.
And I support.
You support?
Lee and did.
All right, Lee and did. All right. On paper.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay.
Does it need a roll shuffle?
We're done with that. Cross it off of our to-do list.
Oh yeah, right, you're right.
No unfinished business? How about correspondence? No correspondence. Lynn does not hear for the Township Board Report unless Lynn wants to add anything.
I was gonna say, if you have any questions, this meeting that we had tonight was a makeup from the snow day last week. So I had put the Renovari purchase agreement on because we didn't get to cover it last time, it came in the interim. Jill said she wanted to address the board at the snow meeting. And so then she said, well, can I come to the next meeting? So we scheduled for tonight, but she's at a conference flying somewhere tonight. So she said, can I come to the next agenda or meeting? So I said, yeah. So she's gonna be on there. Put it on the agenda tonight so the board could have the conversation with legal and find out what we had to do. And we found tonight that while the board thought that addressing the purchase agreement meant that we were addressing the project, we were wrong. All we have to do is just address the purchase agreement. And the fact that they got it to us before April tenth satisfies the deadline. That was really the only significance of the April tenth. Because we said, what happens if we just don't do anything? And Roger said, you have to, you have to address the agreement because they did something before April tenth, when in this case was to give us the agreement. So the agreement's not, it looks like it was cut and pasted, and it has munising stuff in it, and it has blank spaces and wrong people's names. And so besides that, there are things that Roger wanted to make sure the township was covered on certain things. So the consensus was we were going to allow him to have the week and figure out what that draft agreement would look like from the township's perspective. And whether we hand it to Jill if she's here next week, or email it, or whatever, get it to where that satisfies our next step. So while the TIF and all of those brownfield issues are part of the project, they are separate from the purchase agreement. But they're still connected because the purchase money that they have has to be in the Mista brownfield. So we're just doing this part first.
Are you guys gonna bump up that date of September one?
I think, I told Roger just to leave, leave that there and put a red line, because he's gonna do a red line version for us, just so we can see what was changed. Then we can maybe fill that in. Dan made a good point that if we let it go to September, then we've lost the building season, or they have, you know.
Because it's been, what, two years?
Yeah.
What was the September date, remind me?
That they had.
The closing date. That they were suggesting, September first.
I, oh, I see.
For the purchase agreement.
I see.
I'm sure there's more that I'm not even thinking. John, what did we do last week?
It summarizes pretty good, yeah.
We had a busy agenda last week, but I didn't even bring it with me. Let you know what's going on. Sorry, I should have been more prepared because I knew she wasn't gonna be here, silly me.
Any rec committee report?
Nothing besides the meet next week.
And then zoning report?
Really nothing new under planning and zoning, although this week Jason and I did meet with a couple, a planner from the county, and then Ann Drew from the county regarding a potential new site for a new county jail facility. And they met with, they said Nagani Township, and they were meeting with the city. And so we weren't singled out by any means, but that's something, just kind of putting it out there that might be coming down the, coming down the pipe eventually. So we looked at a few areas in the township that might be suitable. Again, no really specifics yet, and they're kind of making a list of potential sites in the county and then working from there, so.
What's that for again?
A potential new county jail. And they did say that there's potential that they would build new on the current site in downtown Marquette, or build completely new somewhere else. They really don't know yet, so very, very early in their process.
And I saw that nine oh six technology sold? Yeah, to some bigger company?
Midnight Highline?
Yeah.
Is the internet company that bought their assets, or the internet side.
Oh, just.
I believe that they bought the company. Their assets, because they got a four million dollar grant, I think, from the feds, Highline did. Actually, I've got that in my office too, if you want to see it, but.
I think, aren't they the company that they got the money from the federal government and they're tasked with, in very rural areas in the U.P. of trying to get broadband out to everybody? That name has been around for a while, and they've been, they've been working on it for several years.
You know, they, there was some discussion, oh, two or three months ago, nine oh six was talking to Powell Township about extending the.
Fiber optic.
Fiber optic up to Powell Township, but.
They've been working up to the last year.
Yeah, well, you know, I contacted the guy from nine oh six because they have fiber optic cable running right in the easement in front of all our properties on Eagles Nest Road. But apparently they just have to connect it from five fifty, which is like, you know, fifty feet away. And I never heard back from the guy. But now you say that there's a new company that's bought their assets, that they'll be the ones that, because, you know, the, I love the university because it's like forty-five hours a month, but still, I mean, you know, getting out to Granite Island to get, that's where it beams from, Granite Island. So for everybody that lives up there on Eagles Nest, it's like hit or miss, you know, if you're working from home or something. I just wondered, so you think that they'll be the ones that'll be developing? Okay, are they, are they a local company here, or are they?
No, no. They've gone, they've done a lot over the country, I don't know where they're stationed.
H.I.G.H., Highline?
Highline.
Okay, huh, interesting, thanks.
I've got a couple of other things, Jim, if you want me to tell you, so you know.
What?
I have a couple of other things.
Oh yeah, go ahead.
I don't want to mess up your meeting though.
Hey, we have another thing else to cover.
Like they're doing TV?
Stretching.
Stretch it out, baby.
Third annual safety forum is March twenty-seventh at six P.M. here in the community room. Three years we've been doing this, we bring the sheriff in, the fire department, and Upset. There's gotta be four, aren't there four of them?
C.P.R.
Well, yeah, the fire department will do that, yeah, that's probably what I'm thinking. And we, you know, I make a pot of coffee and some donuts or something, and they'll, we had some great videos from the fire department side of fires and putting them out and all that. And Upset always gives a great report, talks about the drug issues and, and of course, the sheriff will talk about, you know, the jail or whatever they've got going on too. So it's, it's like an hour, it's not, not really long, but it's pretty informative.
Now is the twenty-seventh?
Yes.
What time was that, Lynn?
Six.
Six.
And then the county's gonna talk Monday night about the O.R.V. ordinance. And it's in our packet tonight, if you want to look at it, I put it in from the state. And it's a draft. So anybody that's worried about that, that might be something you want to check on.
Was that Dennis that we do, read through from the county?
Yeah. Think of Kip's last name that they're negotiating with now. I can't think of his last name. He's got a state police background. So the county liked that idea. And then what else? I know there's something else I was gonna tell you. Oh, I got ahold of, excuse me. You know that all of our trash, not all of ours, half of the township's trash changed the dates and stuff. And I called Ken at North Country to see how it was going, because I was icing my foot and I'm watching the trash trucks going by, you know, and I'm thinking, I wonder if this is working. And he said, he wished that he could have done it sooner if he'd had the money to, you know, buy the equipment and stuff. He said, it's perfect. He said, he's so happy with the township residents, he can't stand it. That they're recycling more and they're organized, and he said, the staff is happy. And he said, it's just been a really good thing for him, so I was just really happy thinking that this is a positive thing, because he was really lary, you know. And then there was a letter to the editor in the Mining Journal from a fellow in Scandia, talking about the dog issue on the well road off of Van and Boom and Grove. And he wasn't very nice, but John did a great job of explaining why, you know, the dog issue is an issue. It's because people think it's a dog park and a run, and they can just do the whole, you know, road or the woods or whatever they want to do. And we've had a dog got hit and killed up there, and we've had people sort of not really attacked, but lunged at from dogs that are not under control. And the township had signs up there for years, but we didn't have exactly the language that we should have had, so we changed that this summer. And it follows state law, says that you have to have your dog leashed, and people don't understand that. Or at least under control with a hunting collar. And I had actually had a lady's dog come running up at me, and he has tail wagging, but he came up at me and I nicely told her, are you aware that you have to have him under control? And she said, oh, I do. And I looked at her and I thought, you know, what if he jumped on me? Well, she reaches in her coat and pulls out the control. I thought, he's not under control. And I know John's been lunged at, our manager, he couldn't get out of his car out there. So, I mean, there are people who are not controlling their dogs. We're liable, if something happens, they have to be leashed, and people are not happy. So John says it's not the bikers, it's not the well employees that have to worry about this, it's just people whose dogs are not being under control. So I wanted to make sure you knew about that. Yeah, and then the new administrator, I didn't write his name down. That's it, sorry. Lots going on.
Jim? I've got a question for, for Lynn.
Sure.
So I got an email today from the Michigan Association of Planners with a bullet point statement stating their position against a House bill that's pending in Lansing that would allow multiple splits of the Land Division Act. So according to the, according to the bulletin from MAPS, or from Michigan Area Planners, you know, this would just allow a whole bunch of divisions that would like fly in the face of, you know, things like, you know, adequate septic and all this other stuff. So I then Googled the Michigan Township Association to see if they had picked up on it, and it was in their legislative watch area. But sometimes they'll say neutral, sometimes they'll say opposed, and this one, for that particular bill, it just said monitoring. So I wondered if you had heard anything about that, because that would kind of.
No, I haven't at all.
Really impact our planning and zoning, you know. I'll, you know, I can forward it to you. I'll forward it to you.
I'd have to read it.
Yeah.
Be a can of worms for you guys.
Yeah.
I would think.
And I just wondered, is, what, in, in a situation like that, if, if there's some position taken, is that always, does the township always defer and wait for the Michigan Township Association?
We sent letters to, to you or anybody, saying what we think a lot of times. Even the case with the seventy counties on the solar, Public Act two thirty-three, is it? Solar, wind and all the battery stuff. The township sent a letter to, who's got it? Foster Swift Attorneys, I believe, they've got seventy counties and townships in the state that are objecting to it, and they tried to put a stay with the court, and it was rejected.
That was the Creo issue? I think there's a bill that's trying to amend that now, yeah.
So yeah, the township wrote a letter in support of what those people were trying to do, we, yeah, we do that.
Okay, well, so I, the, the Michigan Association of Planners provided links to the actual language in the bill, I mean, to the actual bill itself. And I noticed that Bonak, is that his name, our new representative? Yeah, he was not on the list of sponsors. Markkinen was, but that doesn't, you know, that's up in Paul, part of Powell Township, but not, not us. So I just wondered, so I thought that was interesting, that Bonak did not sponsor it. I don't know whether he's opposed to it or whatever, but anyway, I'll, I'll send it to you. I sent a copy to Eric and Jason, but I like to share it with the planning, if you guys want to see it, you know.
The commission can always ask the board to, you know, write a letter in support of it again, or whatever.
Okay.
For whatever it's worth, you know.
Yeah, well.
You don't have a lot of poll, but.
Yeah.
Pay attention to those squeaky wheels, so if they get a lot of people paying attention and sending letters.
Yeah.
I saw an article about that, but it was more for splits for your own lot. If you have one to have a modern law house or another tiny house put on there. Did you see that, was that in there?
No, I didn't mention that, I think this is for larger, and I don't really understand the land division issue as it is. I was just wondering, maybe we could, if the, when Jason and Eric have a chance to look at it, maybe we could have a little, just a brief discussion on it sometime.
Yeah, I did, you just had, just sent it today.
Yeah, 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 I just thought.
And I got them on the same mailing list, so I had already got it from MAP, but I didn't really have time to look at it at all.
Yeah, yeah.
From what I gathered, like currently, it really depends on if it's platted or not platted. I mean, kind of like you, I don't fully understand the Land Division Act either. But most lots have typically, again, typically four divisions, and this said something, they were allowed up to ten. So it was just like an increase in the number of divisions, and like you said, it would kind of go against local control as far as you need this minimum lot size for a septic system, and this minimum lot size for a well, and this much frontage on a public road, and a lot of those things might be challenging to meet if this act was.
Yeah, I think even after the split of ten, then it allowed multiple splits after that.
Yeah.
Which was, would be kind of.
Well, that's for all the low-cost houses now, you know, the land costs less, you don't have to spend as much money on it.
Well, that's one aspect, yeah.
Have you heard anything about what you were doing with that property that the Ford sold up there?
You know, I just saw that, and it's a South Dakota holding company. And I, I went, got their articles in the corporation, but they don't, they never tell you anything, you know. But, so, I don't know, but it's got thirteen thousand feet of shoreline.
Didn't say anything about rockets, did it?
You know, that actually, it's interesting.
Wondering about that.
Well, in the, when the county did their secret consult with this company Explorer Solutions, and they didn't tell anybody about it. Anyway, the Ford property was one of the properties that this Explorer Solutions is gonna be recommended as possible, a possible thing. So, you know, they didn't go anywhere other than this Explorer Solutions report, but I, I don't know. I think there's a lot of timber up there too that they're interested in. But I didn't, I couldn't find out what else this South Dakota holding company is into, except, oh yes, I did. They're into business solutions, they're into software, a lot of software stuff, accounting and this and that, so.
I think part of the company did something with timber, but I can't remember what it said now.
Yeah, yeah. That's probably, that's probably what they're gonna do is harvest.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Cut down the trees and put a space pad in.
Hey, we'll start, we'll start up, not in Powell Township, but.
Anything else, Lynn?
I don't think so. Thank you, no.
It's gonna cost me something else, I forgot. Oh, have you ever heard any more about, I haven't seen it in the legislature or anything like that, about the dark stores? I haven't seen nothing, I haven't seen anything on that anymore.
No.
Kind of like, it's all forgotten.
No, I haven't. It's part of the policy platform that MTA takes to Lansing. Every year, they send, MTA sends their issues, they call them policy platforms, that they want to address with the legislature. And that was one of the items that's in there, and the board usually will comment or say, you know, add this, take that out, or we support what you're doing. Like, that's what they look for, they want all the townships to respond. So we agreed with it, and I, and I know it was in there, so it's something they will address when something comes up. I haven't talked to Carl Bonak since before he was elected, so it's probably about time. Get ahold of him, find out what he's doing. I kind of overwhelmed him. He had no clue what was going on in the township between, you know, Orville and the trails and just Renovari and everything, so. He was kind of glassy-eyed last time I talked to him, but he was just running then. Probably time. I'd like to get the fearsome foursome back together. Hi. Remember how we had McBroom and Keevila and Beyonda and who was the fourth one? Cam Benzey ended up coming in after that. Called them the fearsome foursome, and they'd come to the.
Casperson.
Casperson, thank you.
The logger, that's what I'm.
Trying to think who else was dead, unfortunately.
Yes, but.
They'd come in, you know, once or twice a year in the community room, and it'd be packed, and just firing questions back and forth. And we tried that with Cam Benzey, she and McBroom came in once, and that didn't work out so well. So maybe, you know, get Markkinen in here, we've had him in once, and I don't know, try to bring him in. The, the public wants that, they want to be able to talk. I know there was an issue with Bergman and Eskenaba, that was kind of a cluster, but.
And he doesn't show up for the.
He wasn't asked.
He wasn't asked?
No.
Oh, no kidding.
Set up the meeting, and then they said, well, if you want to come, they just had a chair up there. So his assistant, they had a list of questions that they knew about, that they were gonna ask the chair, and I can't think of his first name. Assistant gave answers, white answers, even though. From what I understand, I haven't talked to him in a while either, so.
How about long, are anything going on with that different?
It's moving forward, I don't know what that means.
Something scheduled then for next quarter?
You probably will see something. They changed engineering companies, but I don't know that the plans changed, I'm not sure.
Are they still, is there still a case in the appellate courts?
Yes, the first case, the township won, and that was whether or not the Z.B.A. had authority, so we prevailed in that. March seventh, so that would have been last week, the FOIA case came up, and there was a lot of discussion. Roger went to the hearing, and they've got an extension. They have sixty days to like beef up their arguments, I guess, would be a good way to say it. And then we have, I think it's fifteen days after that to come back and be clear, and then a decision will be made, they said.
And this is on a, on a FOIA request?
Yes. Oh, I can read it to you.
What went to court and why?
The, a landowner who owns land, Dr. Pesala, was concerned that if they develop. was concerned that if they develop the intersection, that it would accommodate for the traffic for the subdivisions, that it would constitute a condemnation or a taking of his property, right? That was the first, that was the first.
That wasn't what the court case was about.
That wasn't what the court, that was, that wasn't what the ZBA was about.
No, if you know it.
The court case was about whether the ZBA.
Had authority to look at it.
Did it.
Yeah, and then that, they didn't, so that was off. But then this FOIA thing, I'm not sure what that was.
Yeah, my husband reminded me that the paperwork was filed, on the first case of the ZBA, whether or not that was, or not. The paperwork was filed for an appeal, but as far as I know, there's no appeal yet. The second part of it was involved John Marks on the ZBA, who's also a board member liaison. And the contention by Pesala's team was that John Marks, or the township, violated the Open Meetings Act.
Oh, okay.
When he asked the attorney to help him draft or craft the motion for the ZBA determination.
I see.
And why that didn't get thrown out, I have no idea, because one person cannot, um, I said FOIA, didn't I?
Yeah, no, open meetings, yeah, that's good.
No wonder you were confused.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Too many acronyms. Yeah, so.
So, but Longyear is, is their activity just held in advance, or are they moving forward?
Decided to move forward.
Okay, so they're gonna start clearing the land then?
As far as I know, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know what their first steps were, I thought it was infrastructure, so I don't know if that means clearing land, or digging up the ground, I don't know.
I thought Roger said that the deadline had expired for him, for them appealing that first.
It did.
Okay, so they filed it, but it's not gonna go anywhere.
They filed it anyway. I don't, he hasn't said whether or not anything came of it. Said they, I don't know, I don't know the process, so they either order the paperwork, or order something. And he said as soon as they left the courtroom, he saw that it was ordered, the appeal.
How about anything with the veterans' facility?
Um, we think that they have to break ground this year, as far as I know, because of the federal money they've got set aside. I guess the five-acre park that they were talking about down in that would've been the southwest quarter is now two acres. But that's the last time I think they changed the plan. But as far as I know, it's still going, it should be this year. Some of the holdup is the road that's gotta be redirected. Once they found out that 600 cars do that road every day, the Road Commission said, no, we can't close that off. It's gotta be rerouted. So it's, because it's going around the property, it still has to be, you know, what is it, 60 feet on center, or whatever? And six feet.
And I know that township's got infrastructure along there, waters, and then the state for us to school pathways. And so, part of our deal, or what we wanted, was all that replaced, and so, which we understand they will. But, yeah, as I've understood it.
Goes right down the middle of the road.
Yep, right down the middle of the property, yeah. But, yeah, as far as I've heard, they're, they're still moving in the right direction, and they're just dealing with that road realignment, so.
I haven't been to any of the Road Commission meetings, so I don't know. That's one of the reasons I like to go.
Nothing more with the intersection? Nothing difference happened, that was?
Fourthville? No, haven't heard anything. I kinda told Longyear, you know, maybe, I said from the beginning, maybe you gotta build it so we can get it fixed. And he goes, well, that's too expensive for us, which I, I was half saying it, you know? Sometimes they say, you know, build it and then they'll come, but, so, they're gonna go ahead. They can do 16, or 17, or whatever it was anyway, so. They can make some money on it, I don't know. We'll see.
Any other questions for Lynn, while we, here? Nothing more, right, Eric? Any announcements for anyone? How about public comment? Roger?
Just my ride.
Yeah.
Just, pardon me.
Okay, any more comments from planning commissioners?
Nice bud, I'll do excuse next week.
Need excuse next year? Okay, I'm trying to stretch it out here, but I'm running out of things. I guess meeting adjourned at 7:45.